From her, I mean she did, she said she, she texted me and said she would be there Monday, but said she would be here later. Who knows?
Yeah. I'm gonna say Robert, that's my right. Mike, there you go, there you go. Huh, how many acres is this? I got a fifty, I got a sixty in from home, can't be that much heavier now. Cool, I'll let you know.
Do you have, so far have you any, what we call? Greg's been trying to get over for weeks, can't get over. I bet she's in Florida, so.
Yeah, you should announce yourself.
He's done some work for her, she's not, he does work for him. Said I don't get paid for it, I go and look up stuff.
Yeah.
They've got a contract, they need to be taken early.
So you got, did you see the staff report? I sent it to you by email. Yeah, it came in about two weeks ago, so it is, you can check, Joe has a copy of it, I didn't, I don't know what's on the copy, but I didn't get it. But he's gonna go, he'll go through the conditions of approval, which walk you through all the stuff. No, I think we're good, and then they've also, they're gonna do. On the front there, did you see the improvements they're gonna make to the front? So the other section here, they're gonna turn an apron out, ten feet straight. Tell all those trucks the wider turning radius here. Stop bars on the road.
All right, it's about six o'clock, we'll get started here. If you haven't signed in and plan on speaking tonight, please sign in at the lectern and a few minutes we'll have Mr. Perkins swear everyone in. There are some changes and we'll let you know as we go through the order of the agenda for tonight. First on the agenda, we need to approve October invoices.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Is it you, Dan?
Yeah.
All right, have a motion and a second to approve October invoices. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? All right, they are approved. And I need a motion to approve the October minutes.
So moved.
You got it in your packet?
So moved.
Mr. Stone? And Mr. Green? Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? All right, and then the November agenda. We've got some changes. Joe, do you want to go over those now?
Sure, the agenda hasn't changed as far as new additions, but we do have some withdrawals, postponement changes. So I guess first is Big Graves' property, FSP two thousand twenty-three dash fifty-three is postponed. They didn't get a form yet, definitely. And then the last item, H, Limestone Farms, CMA twenty-two-three dash fifty-five is going to be continued to next meeting. And that, that's all.
Okay. All right, we'll get back to those in just a second. So with those changes that Joe mentioned, I need approval for the November ninth agenda.
I'll make a motion for approval of the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, and so we've gone over the postponements and withdrawals there. Yeah, we've got PDP twenty-two-three dash fifty, item C on the new business, Huck's Market has also been postponed. So if you are here for Huck's Market, the Graves' Property, or the Labstone Farms Distillery, they have been postponed, continued. You're here for any of those, we won't hear those tonight. Okay?
The only thing we talked about is the limestone farms.
So the, the last item, the Limestone Farms Distillery, Joe asked for that to be postponed for some.
That'd be continued.
I mean, continued. But it's listed as postponed off here, but they have sent out their notices and all, so that they don't have to do all of that over again. We're gonna ask to continue that, but that is a, is that a public hearing?
Yeah, so we would open that up, then continue it.
Okay, so we will open the public hearing to hear ZMA twenty-two-three dash fifty-five, Limestone Farms Distillery. And we're going to continue that until next month. And we will close the public.
Now, we'll adjourn it for tonight, because we're continuing to next month.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. All right. So everybody understand what we're doing here. You don't have, I hope you don't have a problem with that day.
They'll have another day, right?
Yes, they'll have, they'll have their day, but not tonight. All right, so we go back up to the top of the. Agenda, under old business, PDP twenty-two-three dash thirty-eight, online transport. Preliminary development plan for a hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred forty-eight square foot gravel storage area located six fifty-six Old Delaplane Road.
We did have an item eligible for consent, if you want to do that now, or we can wait.
We've got, you just had one item or two items?
Just one item.
Okay.
Well, two, actually two items, two items.
Yeah.
South Crossing and Phoenix Transportation.
Right, so we have PSP twenty-two-three dash forty-eight, South Crossing Amendment, amended. And then PSP twenty-two-three dash fifty-two, Phoenix Transport Transportation Property. Both of those are eligible for consent agenda. And so the first one, the South Crossing amended, does anyone wish to hear that? All right, thank you. Is anyone wish to hear that or opposed to that? All right. Take the. Motion.
I'll make a motion to step up to those since they're sent in.
All right, I have a motion, need a second.
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So you'll see Mr. Perkins right here. Thank you. And the other item for consent is PSP twenty-two-three dash fifty-two. Phoenix Transportation Property. Preliminary subdivision flat, subdivision of parcels, uh, wait a minute, of forty point one seven acre industrial zone block into two parcels.
Is that included?
His motion included both of those.
Oh, both of those?
Yeah.
All right, so we don't need to hear that. Moving right along. So the vote then was for both of them, correct? All right, we have the consent agendas out of the way. Mr. Perkins, if you will swear everyone in that wishes to speak.
Yes, sir. If everyone signed in to speak, if you'd please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the statement to the next night to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you. Okay, the first application is a request for preliminary development plan approval for online transport. This is a trucking, trailer storage use on an I-one piece of property approximately ten acres in size on the corner of Delaplane and Sims Road. This, this property, this project has been postponed a number of times. It was approved originally in two thousand sixteen. They came back in two thousand twenty-two, it was denied. They came back with an amended plan, slightly altering, removing the building that was previously shown. And submitted that earlier this year, it's been postponed a number of times. We've worked through some of the issues and we think it is ready for approval or at least consideration. So the request is to, to use the site for truck and trailer storage on a gravel lot. So just a gravel area for the truck storage. They are at improving the driveway and circulation on site. So this property here is at the corner of Sims, it's the only property really in the area that's zoned light industrial. So there's a lot of industrial uses in the area, but this one is actually zoned light industrial. This is the property, the applicant owns four lots or four parcels around it that are being used for essentially the same use. So truck and trailer storage, truck repair, and part of the same business, but they're separate lots. They all have unique kind of histories. So the lot to the, immediately to the left had a auto truck repair business for a long time, so it, it, it transferred to the current owner many years ago, but it's a lawfully non-conforming use on that property that's continued since at least the eighties. The lot directly behind that five acre lot had a development plan approved in the late nineties, early two thousands, I believe. It, it is zoned A-one, but it had development plan approval or at least reviewed by the planning commission. But again, that is also a lawfully non-conforming use of that property at this point, because it doesn't conform to the, to the zone, underlying zoning, but the use has been in place for more than ten years and it did go through development plan review in the past. That lot, the L-shaped upside down L there in the back, has a development plan approval for that use. It was designated or identified as light industrial at the time of the development plan approval, but we believe that was an error at that time. So that, that does have development plan approval on the back. So you see, there's a lot of, a lot of kind of unique history to this area. This business is operating on all four parcels. When we first reviewed the development plan, our first thought was just rezone it all, you know, bring it all into conformance. But the infrastructure is just not in place to increase the amount of industrial zoning at this point, because there's not sewer in the area. Sims Road just can't, can't handle a greatly expanded use where if it was all zoned light industrial, it could potentially get another user coming in there and trying to do a much more intensive development. So the plan at this point is not to ask for rezoning until the infrastructure is upgraded in the area, but just to review the development plan on this one ten acre site that's already zoned and is, is on the corner there. So that's kind of the context, all the property around it, east and west and north is all zoned A-one agricultural, except for this, this corner lot.
And that, all, all those are the ones with the red stars on them?
The red stars are the property that this applicant owns. So they own those four.
And then we're looking at the one outlined in blue for tonight?
Correct, yes. And this aerial is from two thousand nineteen, so the aerial is a little bit old, it doesn't show any gravel on this lot. The background history that we've gone over before on this lot is they, they laid down gravel and started using this lot. We, we investigated, got a, got a complaint, looked at it and gave them a notice of violation, required them to come through the development plan process. So that's kind of the background on this corner lot. They were under the impression that since it was already zoned, they could, they could use it for storage. But they needed to get development plan approval before they put the gravel down and changed the, and regraded. So that's the reason they're back. Although they're not proposing any buildings on site, they just want to use the site for, for gravel, truck and trailer storage. So we've kind of gone over kind of the issues previously to do with the site. The main issue is that its access is from Delaplane. Delaplane is very close to Cherry Blossom, so when trucks come into the site or leave the site, they have to make that sharp U-turn. Where sharp turn to get off Delaplane onto Cherry Blossom. And we've, we've gotten testimony from the neighbors in the area that that blocks traffic, you know, when there's, at rush hour, peak times, the truck traffic, when there's multiple trucks coming and going, it blocks traffic, blocks school buses, blocks ambulance and emergency services. So we tried to address that with the applicant, recommended postponement a couple of times and met with the applicant on site and the designer. And they've, they've recommended a few modifications, which I'll, I'll get into now. So the, the main driveway to the park, you can see the parking area to the north where they're gonna park the trailers. There's a small detention pond in the left bottom corner. That's just gonna drain the gravel, compacted gravel and hold it on site and provide the stormwater requirements for the site. So the may, they're proposing a asphalt apron at the entrance and continue an asphalt or a chip and seal driveway into the park, parking area and then to the left and circulate traffic around. So they're proposing to do one-way traffic in now, so that's, it's a twenty-four foot driveway, but they're proposing to, to route the trucks as they come in down that, down that driveway and not have trucks come out there, but they're, they'll circulate around and come out on the driveway on that lot that they own to the west. So they'll come out further from, from Delaplane. There are no other improvements on site, but they do have to meet our landscape requirements and they're showing, meeting the landscape requirements by retaining that tree line and filling it in where necessary to provide screening from, from the property to the right or the, I suppose the east, northeast. I-one is required to screen all A-one adjoining properties, but they own the lots on the, on the other side. So really the only screening that will be required is, is along Sims Road, because they can waive internal screening. So our ordinances allow A-one properties to waive any required landscape buffers. They will have to put it on, on the other lines unless they waive it themselves, which I assume that they will, since they own that property. And the use kind of goes across the lot, so the use is happening on all the lots. So really that's all that's happening on the property. This is, is just a landscape sheet that shows the existing tree line in the cloud pattern. To the right, it kind of shows the driveway more clearly where it's coming in. So this is, this is, you can see Delaplane and Cherry Blossom there and Sims Road is that, where that tree line is down the center of the screen. But you can see how close Delaplane is to Cherry Blossom and how that would be difficult to make that turn. When we were out on site, we noticed that there is a, a pretty bad sight distance problem at Delaplane looking up Sims. So the trucks, as they come out, have to pull all the way out in the intersection to see up Sims before they can even make their turn. They have to just kind of scoot out and check traffic. So you can kind of see how it's blocked and there's, there's a, there's kind of a rock ledge there. They're proposing to, to clear and county road department, I think, is gonna help and clear some of that area out in the right of way, but they're gonna clear the brush out and the rest of it. Once that's done, we may need to look back, they may need to take that shelf down a little bit to get better sight distance. But this is basically, as you creep out, you have to go out pretty far to see up that road. Before I get to the rest of it, the applicant after meeting on site is, is proposing a few improvements that they hope will, will kind of mitigate some of the issues with the access. And I guess I have them in slides, so I'll just give it to them. So they're, they're recommending to add ten foot of asphalt at the entrance from Cherry Blossom so that this entrance, as you come in, you can see it's about, it's about thirty-five to forty feet wide. They're, they're recommending to add more pavement on the, on that right-hand side so they can get turn movement on trucks and make it easier to get in and out. They're recommending removing the vegetation at that corner that I pointed to with the rock ledge to clear, get better sight distance. They're recommending adding stop signs at the three intersections of Sims Road and Delaplane. So traffic coming in will be, have free movement, but there'll be stop condition on Delaplane on both sides and on Sims so that incoming traffic can turn and those, those people waiting at the light won't be blocking that road. And then adding sign, signage indicating that there's a stop sign upcoming and do not block that intersection. And then adding stop bars at the stop sign. So this is showing where they're recommending widening the entrance. And this is an auto turn engineering program that shows kind of the amount of turning radius a truck, a tractor, trailer truck will need to make that turn in there. It shows it, it can meet it, but the extra ten feet would help that, that turning radius. In addition, the applicant is trying to address some other things that were raised at the last hearing. One that there's, there's a, and I showed it in this picture. That five, or that lot, that L-shaped lot in the back, when it was approved, they started using, there was an entrance to Sims Road approved and they started using, and they weren't supposed to use it for truck traffic, I think that was part of the condition of approval. Trucks started using it, so they were given a notice of violation and they, they kind of rectified that situation, but they put in this bar. But the, the applicants were recommending or agreeing to putting a, a kind of heavy duty gate or a overhead bar that would, that wouldn't allow trucks to pass through it. The other, I guess, item they agreed to is to just allow one-way traffic on their site, not to have two-way traffic at that main entrance just because of its proximity to, to the intersection. And that any new lighting on site will be internally directed and will not kind of spill off-site, so it won't have any impact off-site. So those are kind of like, kind of the recommendations that, that we came to by meeting on site and that they've agreed to. So we are recommending approval with a waiver for the gravel storage, just for the truck and trailer storage, not for the internal drives. And then the, the conditions that I've added in there are number two, because, because the stop bar, stop sign and sight distance are kind of preliminary recommendations, we'd like to see a traffic engineer look at it and do an evaluation and report on it and make sure that that is, it's meeting accepted engineering practices for those stop signs and stop bars. And looking at the sight distance, if that, if that ledge needs to be brought down after the, the brush is cleared. So that's number two. And then number three, one-way traffic through the site. And then four is the, is the lighting shall be kept on site. And then the barricade on, on that other lot, it's not actually part of this site, so it's not part of this application. It's an agreement to do that off-site at it, at their other entrance that they, they own the property there, so they can do that. Other than that, just our standard recommendations that they, they go through development plan approval, they get approval of the final development plan, final, you know, improvements to the intersection, get that approved before any, before they start construction on any of that. I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary in the rest, those are our standard development plan conditions.
I have a couple of clarifying questions I want to ask you.
Okay.
The, in the past, that particular driveway, you know, stop on this, this development, this barricade that they're talking about putting up with the bar. What happens in the future and if for some reason that happens again or it's used improperly, what, what, they have to correct that?
Yeah, we'd have to cite them, you know. Well, give them a notice of violation, give them a, you know, fifteen, thirty days to correct it. They'd have to correct it or they would, you know, be subject to fines.
And then the picture you showed about the stone ledge edge, they may have to come out and pay for that?
They would pay for, if that ledge needed to be brought down for sight distance.
And you'll determine that when you get the building down?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be part of the engineering review.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions of Joe? The owner, owner representative, have anything other than Mr. Billings?
The U shape?
No.
Oh, back to the plan?
Upper right-hand corner.
I think that's gray, gray line. I think that's grade, grade line, L, the grading lines. So I, probably to get some slope onto that gravel area to direct.
It says down to, it doesn't say anybody, it looks like a road, but it's not a road.
No, it's, that's the elevation, elevation lines.
Okay. Mr. Billings?
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Chairman, ladies and lady and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Nathan Billings with Billings Law Firm, and it's my pleasure to represent online transport tonight. Um, you all seen me before. A lot of times I have a big fancy PowerPoint, um, but a lot of times we're trying to argue about stuff, and I think tonight's a success story. Um, we've worked extensively with staff, really, for a ye-, almost a year now. I think I called Joe about the first week in January and started working on this project after you all denied the request last year. Um, and so here we are, 11 months later, having worked extensively through this project with, uh, a lot of changes, a lot of recommendations. Appreciate Mr. Watson over here, who lives across the road. I know he spoke last year. Um, we met with him on-site, talked with him, um, about conditions. A lot of these are a result of that communication. Um, and so we're in, in agreement with the staff's recommendation, um, because of that. I'm happy to go into more detail if you all have questions for me. Um, I think the summary of this is, uh, is, is what I would say is, last year you all denied the development plan, which was more intense on the property, under a potential recommendation to rezone all four properties to industrial light use. And when I got involved, we look at saying, that is to the detriment of the road in the neighborhood at this time. Let's look at a less intense use on this property alone, and let's leave the other parcels alone instead of rezoning them, which would only lead to more intense use. Doesn't promise anything in the future, but for now, that's a better result. With the site improvements being made on Sims, on Della Plain, and the Cherry Blossom intersection is proposed, it significantly enhances the safety for everybody using that intersection. Uh, and we have, we still have to satisfy some traffic engineering reports that staff has recommended as condition number two. We're in agreement with that. Uh, so we're in agreement with the staff report.
Sir, did you meet anybody else in that neighborhood besides Mr. Watson the other night or something?
Uh, Mr. Jesse, we did not. We, we know that he showed up at the hearing last year, so we reached out to him. We looked through the file and didn't know of anyone else who objected. Um, we, we're contacting anyone. We sent out two different notices for the hearing originally, and then we sent out a renotice again, and that was done by the engineering firm. No notices or no objections were responded to that. Um, as always, if you wanna, I'm always willing to meet with anybody, talk to anybody, sometimes to my clients, uh, pocket of detriment. Um, but we didn't hear from anyone else except for him.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Other questions?
No other questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep. Do we have, uh, any neighbors, uh, in the area that have any questions or concerns? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Steve Watson, I live.
On the opposite, well, when you come down Sims Pike, they're on the left, I'm on the right. My question is, we came here in 2016, and please don't misunderstand what I'm getting ready to say. We heard the same thing then, the hearing tonight. Mr. Billings, I believe him, he's very earnest in what he's saying. Nothing was done then that was promised. So how can you assure me that's gonna be done now?
What were the specific things that were promised that were done?
Well, one of the things was, you're passing through, and they would put an evergreen screen up and down to the fire.
Well, that's, that's pictures, look across there, that they sit in here and they agreed that they would plant on 25-foot centers, two rows of evergreens for a first screen. I'll challenge any of you come out here, that was 2016, I believe it was, to find where one tree's been planted. They said they would never illuminate the neighbors.
Well, this is how we're repeating attempts to try to give, we're losing, uh, redirect the lights. This is what I saw from one of their regional supervisors, and the answer that I got back was, sorry, Mr. Watson, I can't see that from my house. That's what I got.
Who said that?
One of the regional directors, one of their upper.
Of Phoenix, you mean? Of, of regional directors of Phoenix?
Uh, on.
I mean, online transport is what I mean, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. And it wasn't until we came into this venue and had some issues, then all of a sudden the lights got repositioned, and they are standing in my driveway saying, are we okay now? We put up with that for almost two to three years.
So does it still look like this, or have they redirected?
No, they finally redirected. Even the county sheriff's office went over and asked them to redirect it. So I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of confidence in our track record that what is being proposed is gonna be followed through. As far as putting up stop signs, stop bar stuff, they're already there. Come out and take a look. They're in place. And Harold Dean, to answer your question, what happens if a truck is going up Sims Pike and they're gonna send a notice? Well, that don't help when my kids are on a school bus and they were late for school a couple of weeks ago, for a half hour, because they met a, a truck that wasn't supposed to be there. You send a notice, and it happens again the next 30 days? Okay, that's fine. But it don't solve the problem. So I would like to hear what we're gonna do with this situation. And let me back up and say something. I don't, I don't care if you put a gravel park lot down, honestly, because what they proposed to do this time last year and what brought all this about, they're gonna build a building there. They were grading off, they were building a building, they had architects over there, they were surveying, they were on my property shooting elevations and everything. I said, what are we doing? They're gonna build a new mechanic shop there. Me and my neighbor have an issue with the fact, we can hear their air chisels, wrenches and stuff, a thousand feet away. Now you're gonna be right in our front door. And if you don't know what air wrenches and stuff sound like, think of going to the dentist, the drill, and escalate that by 100 times over, because that's what they sound like. You, you can hear them a half mile away. And when we made issues with that, and they said, like I said, they came in and we didn't pass, whatever. Well, we've already, we've already done this, can we put down a gravel park lot? I don't care if we put down a gravel park lot. Mr. Billings, I was talking about it. I have no problem with that. But I want somebody to be accountable for what they're supposed to do. I want somebody to be able to come back in here a year from now and say, thank you, they did what they're supposed to do. Or can I come back in here and say, you dropped a ball again? Because it was dropped in 2016. And I think it's evidence by the pictures I've given you. And those are very recent.
So are they using Sims Road now?
On occasion. It's usually by mistake, but yes, it happens. Yeah, it happens.
What was the time lapse between this picture and when they finally fixed it? You said the sheriff's office?
It was over two years.
Two years.
Yeah, yeah. And that was out of frustration, and I sent that text. I think you read it. It was out of frustration that I could get nowhere with them. You know, I don't, I don't think me and my neighbor should have to take put blankets over our windows because they, with light pollution, come, come in our property. We have rights to, and we have, we should have the right to live in our property. We've been there 40 years. We don't mind them being there. That's fine. But be a good neighbor. That's what we're asking. And live up to your promises.
You make a really good point. It depends, Sarah, on instance, the short time I've been here where we've had, you know, staff's worked very hard with the things that's supposed to be done, and sometimes it doesn't get done, or sometimes have done, and, and, you know, I, I just like, I think you asked a fair question. You know, and people on the property, developers, you've done a, a really good job in listening and making suggestions, but it comes down to what kind of teeth do we really have when people do do, do not do work? Goes on, on these lists. I mean, can they be shut down, for example? I mean, I, beyond fine, what is a fine? Is it a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars? What would that, what does that mean?
Um, it's up to $500 a day, where they have to be in plump, you have to go for, you search for a judge, and they have to set their line.
And how long does those signs go indefinitely? Could it go on?
As long as they do set a violation.
Until they're in, in, corrected. From the time they get the fishing notice until it's corrected. Uh, could I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, uh, and, and Mr. Billings? If, if we could get a, an estimate as to the timetable that you guys are on for when these improvements are, are gonna be made, uh, and set a hearing date to come back for a review. That way staff can prepare for that, you can prepare for that, you can hear what's being done, whether anything's being left out, uh, and we can, you know, tighten up or keep going, whatever's required at the time. But, but a realistic timetable. We don't wanna come back here, well, we're not doing anything yet. Uh, but, you know, after we're into the process a little bit, why don't we just go ahead and schedule a review?
And could it also include, I mean, I would wanna make sure it includes anything that was committed to in 2016 that still is an open issue, which I guess this is still an open issue, or?
They portrayed that.
I'm sorry?
They portrayed that in 2016, quote-unquote, as a natural vegetative screen. Which sounds really good, but, but to put that spin on it, but being a country boy, I can tell you that's nothing but an overgrown fence rope. It's all it is. It should've been bulldozed 50 years ago, old wires, and tell me how much of a screen is there. It sounds good when you say it that way, but they agreed to plant a double row of evergreens. Mr. Billings, I've talked about it, and he's supposed to talk to his people about it. Got it?
Joe, you were gonna say something?
Well, I was just gonna say, these are really two different issues. The evergreens were part of the preliminary approval. They never followed through and did the final development plan, so they're, they weren't required. That expired. So, I mean, if they had moved forward and got the final development plan, we would've made sure they put in the double row of evergreens, but they, that was the prob-, initial problem. And I can't speak to why they didn't follow through with what they got approved, but they did. But that's different than the light. The light's kind of a nuisance violation that we can, if, if we get a complaint, we can go out there and, you know, serve them with a notice of violation, and that, that is separate, kind of, from the development plan. But the reason that there's not the double row of evergreens is they never, they never, you know, followed through with the final development plan and started construction on the building. They were approved for a building, I believe, at that time, and they just, you know, business purposes, I don't know why, they just didn't follow through.
Well, that begs me to ask the question, if they weren't approved for a development plan, how did they put down gravel lots and do everything else? I don't know, I'm asking the question. How, how did they move forward and get where we are tonight? If they weren't approved, why are we having this discussion?
They weren't approved for the bill, I mean, the building expired, but yeah, the gravel was a violation. We've gone through this multiple times. That's kinda why they were, they're kind of in a, you know, in a pickle at that point. They either excavate all the gravel out, restore it to the original condition, or they come back with the preliminary development plan, try to get it approved and move forward and actually come into compliance. So the path we chose is to try to come into compliance rather than forcing them to excavate all the, the site and return it to pre-development condition. It is zoned industrial, so that's just the path we chose.
And we have tried to work with them. I can tell you, the corner that's showing to your right, it does have limited sight. I have taken and sprayed that multiple times to kill the vegetation. I get no charge, no, with their permission, because I spray it on their property. They'll tell you that. I have sprayed up and down the, I have kids on school buses there. I want them to be safe, and they're not today. Okay? So everybody's trying to work together. There is no animosity here. But we got problems. The problems were addressed, like I say, in 2016. I don't see where we're any better tonight, what we were then. If we're not gonna, if we're not gonna implement it, we're not gonna follow through, and nobody's gonna follow through on it, let's all go home.
Well, I think Mr. Perkins had a, you know, the reasonable solution, to have a, a hearing at some point down the road, see what the progress is, and, and kinda go from there.
Okay.
Mr. Billings, did you have something else?
Just whatever. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, let, let me try to deal with a couple of different comments on here, because I think Mr. Mr. Kane has addressed some of them.
I guess it's a fair question, isn't it?
So, so first is, uh, when I got involved last year, the first thing I did is, is typical, is I asked Joe, I said, hey, would you go back and send me all of the development plan files you have on this? And you went back to early 90s, I think. And through that process, we came to, I think, a, a collective decision that, or agreement that this lot was zoned industrial, and the other three lots were not, um, in the process. And in that, I could not find, uh, there was a 2016 preliminary development plan, but the owner did not go forward to actually do any of the construction or any of the improvements at that time, and that development plan expired. And so there is no requirement, or has there been a requirement, to install the evergreen screening buffer from the 2016, because that plan was never finalized and built upon. Subsequent to that, my understanding is, sometimes I gotta admit things I don't like, but online transport added gravel to the lot, which I think led to staff notifying them that they had done something in violation, which necessitated last year's development plan, which you all denied in December. At which time, from my review of the video, you all said, go and rezone all the other three properties and come back and bring everything to be industrial. At which time I got involved in January, and we had a decision to make. Did we want to appeal that, because we didn't wanna go rezone three other lots, or, or move forward with a revised development plan, which is why we're here tonight? In that process, the 2016 plan, uh, while it, it's not irrelevant completely, it doesn't legally bind the applicant. Now, uh, there is a screening requirement that you all have adopted that we have to comply with. And if we don't comply with it, to, to your question, Mr. Jesse, staff can always send any owner of property in Scott County, a notice of violation that they're in violation of the zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations. And that property owner has a certain period of time in which to bring the property into compliance or take another step, such as an appeal, and if not, you all can get advice from your very capable counsel to tell you what steps you can do to, to, to bring a property into compliance, whether it is fines, monetary sanctions, whether it is injunctive relief, if a property is being used unlawfully in, in contravention to the existing land use, or other remedies. That's always your purview. So you have legal remedies that, I, I, some I, I can't tell you what those are, because I'm not your attorney, but Mr. Perkins can tell you all about the arsenal of things he can do on a property owner. In this case, one of those arsenal weapons has been used, a notice of violation from Mr. Kane and his staff. So we're here on a development plan for that. We have worked through the development plan process to decrease the proposed intensity of the use on the property. And not only to, to comply with the property, but to make a public intersection safer by ex-, by extensive work with, with, where's it, with Mr. Watson back here, and with staff, and with Mr. Krebs, um, along that intersection. The intersection today, to, to add clarity to something Mr. Watson said, has two stop signs. It has a stop sign, it's actually, can I go, can I use this to go back to him?
Yeah.
Oops, sorry. No, I messed it up. That figures, give an attorney a PowerPoint, he messes it up.
Yeah, we're not, we're not here for the mechanicals.
Yeah, so.
I have some questions, probably. Go to the area you could.
So, sir, while she's.
There we go, of what is ours?
Sir, while she's bringing it up, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Has this property had the, from what year, has it had the same ownership all these years?
No. It's changed ownership during the process.
Okay, when did this property change ownership?
2019, maybe? Was it 2019 it changed ownership? Yeah. It's, it, online transport is the overarching user of the property, but different legal entities actually own the property.
This text right here, what year was it relative to the current owner, or I guess was this due to online transport?
So, are you asking me that question?
No, I'm asking Mr. Watson that question.
That was just within 12 months.
Okay, thank you.
This, this text is what, 12 months of today?
Yeah, just like.
Okay, I don't know when that text was, because I don't have that evidence in the record. But, but Ms. Singer, Mr. Watson raised that as an issue with me when I met him on site. And so what I told him is, in order to make sure that issue doesn't happen again, let's add a condition to the development plan that says, all interior lighting has to be internal, so that if that problem happens again, you don't have to call the sheriff, who may not, may not do anything. You call Joe Kane, and Joe Kane will go right to Charlie, and they'll send us a notice of violation, so that you have the protection, the best protection you can get under land use regulations, that it's a development plan note that allows you the security that if there's a violation of that, it gives an enforcement mechanism.
I guess my concern is, while obviously it behooves attorneys to go through the litigation process and go to Charlie and go here and go there, the reality is, he reached out directly, didn't get any response, so that makes me question, uh, the response time, the sense of urgency that online transport has in addressing the issues. I think that's a legitimate question. When going directly to the user, owner, whatever they were, if, they don't respond, and you send the sheriff out, yes.
Can I make an answer to that, please?
Sure, sure.
That was, that was out of frustration after two years of requesting.
This text was, you mean?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. After two years, that's what, that text, out of frustration, was finally due.
I mean, you shouldn't have, you should be able to directly contact them and say, hey, this is an issue, and they go, oh, we're so sorry, let's solve it.
And Ms. Singer, I, I don't know of the facts involved. And Ms. Singer, I don't know of the facts involved in that. I've heard Mr. Watson's side of it, I've talked to my client, and they have a different version of it. But, but my, my point is this, I can come here and I can try to fight the factual stuff, or I can say this, Mr. Watson, I can give you the absolute best protection that you can get, which is a note on the development plan that says, all lighting has to be internal, so that Mr. Kane and your attorney have the best enforcement mechanism in the world, so that it's not an issue in the future. Because I, so I remove it from the table, because they then have the right to go seek injunction, to go levy fines, they have all the power in the world from you all to go enforce that. That's the best thing that any, that anybody in the world can have with respect to that issue again, so that it doesn't happen again.
Starting today, and that.
If this is approved.
Yeah, yeah, and that obviously doesn't have anything to do with what was done in the past.
Well.
I understand there's problems in the past, but what we're, what we're approving tonight.
The, I believe that CARIS-100 does not allow the planning commission to deny a development plan based upon whether they think a property owner has acted in good faith in the past or not, or whether they think they'll act in good faith in the future or not. The question is, does it comply with the land use regulations in place at the time? While the other things may be taken as evidence and heard, what I'm offering you all is a solution to that problem that becomes a matter of land use in the future. Just like the traffic bar in the back. At this location here, there is a reference in a prior development plan that it was supposed, that there was some type of barrier there. It was, it's not clear from the record about exactly what it is. Okay? Online transport says, we don't use that entrance, but they're okay to add a barrier absolutely unconditionally in the language today, so that you all have the enforcement right, that if a truck goes down that road and comes in that entrance, which I would have to tear up the truck to go through this now, you all have enforcement mechanism. But I also want to make sure that everyone knows, there's other industrial properties back on this road, Sims Pike besides ours, that use this every single day. The day we were out there on site, there were heavy trucks coming back and forth. So, I'm offering a suggestion here, which is off of our property, but on this development plan, so you all have an enforcement mechanism, so that if somebody's upset in the future, you all have the legal rights to address your concern, Mr. Jesse, is how do we resolve a violation? That's the absolute best thing I can do, and it's frankly better what you have today in this process. With the, with the, with the intersection here, there's currently two stop signs. One heading east on Dela Plain at this location, one heading west on Dela Plain at this location. There's no stop sign heading south on Sims Pike, which is primary, I believe, the cause of backwards, because cars coming on Sims Pike come all the way to here and stop, which backs up this intersection. By adding a stop sign on the north side of Dela Plain, and by adding stop bars painted across all three intersections, and do not block signs, clearing out the vegetation for about 200 feet here, and extending the apron here, all of those are designed to allow improved traffic flow, which both staff has been out there, and we still have to, condition number two says, we still have to satisfy a traffic engineering report and study. And if we don't, we come back here. If we don't satisfy that, we come back here. So, all of that is improvements made on public right-of-way, on public roads, at our expense, which everyone benefits from, including us. But, I mean, everyone, you've been on Sims Pike, right? That road is an old, narrow county road, that two regular vehicles passing have problems getting by each other. That road has significant easements on both sides, and that road will likely never be improved.
Well, thank you for acknowledging what we are having to deal with.
Yeah. I totally had dogs on, Mr. Jesse. That's why, that's why we've suggested widening the apron, adding stop signs, clearing out the trees for the site distance, because safety is an important issue. If it wasn't, we wouldn't be having this part of the discussion. But I also want to acknowledge, Sims Pike has problems that, that are going to exist. There's other county roads the same way, but it's probably one of the most constrained. So, what can we do? We can add other things in the process, which is just like the property in the north of this, right? You all zone changed, proved a zone change on that a year ago, ten months ago, but the development plan was denied because the use was so intense, you didn't want the cranes on the road. We're not even using Sims. All of our traffic is now coming one way off of here, which is important, because now it just allows the stacking here. So, if we allow only one way in, trucks can't come out this way, there's no blocking. It's one way in, this is one way in, one way out, it allows all that stacking in here. And when that turn rate increases, increase, we still have the last exhibit that our engineer put together, he can testify if you'd like him to call tonight. So, so I want to address those three things. The screening from 2016 was a preliminary plan, it was never final certified, because improvements weren't made. The lighting issue to address that, your concern, is, I don't want to fight over what happened or didn't, because frankly, it doesn't help me, and it doesn't benefit you all. I can promise you this, there's a note on here that says, all lighting has to be internal, and now you have total authority to do something if the owner doesn't do it. That's the absolute best thing I can give you. And, and we have, on this property here, a note on this development plan saying that bar has to be there, so that you all, again, have total ability to enforce compliance if there's a violation. So, I've tried to accommodate the concerns by equipping you all with tools to enforce what other people say didn't happen in the past.
Let me understand something, they're coming in that, that one thing right there in the center, to go out, they're going clear over there to the left on that road and coming back out there?
That's correct. They could enter and exit on this road, but this is one way in only.
Okay, so they can go in or out that, the other way?
That's correct. This would still be in or out, but they could only take a right-hand turn here, they can't come out this way.
Now, is that road on the left gravel?
This is right here? I believe so, isn't it? How far back?
All the way back to the, yeah.
Charlie, what was your recommendation again? Perkins?
Oh, that we look at the timetable for this development, and we actually have, if you will, an in-meeting review, not just staff getting out there perhaps at times, this way they can prepare for it. We've got it scheduled, they know when it is. If in fact, things aren't progressing like they should, for some other reason, you know, they can be rescheduled. But that way, everybody knows that there's a kind of a, an interim reckoning available.
So, here's what, I, I don't know, I don't know what the timing for construction is, I don't know the bidding of the cost to these things, because some of them are on a public right-of-way. Part of this is, we have to get an encroachment permit. The Transportation Cabinet of Kentucky owns all this, so we have to get an encroachment permit to these improvements. Is, is, so I can't, I'm not in a place to promise, it's going to be done by January 31st, or something like that. I would suggest this, if you all want to dock it for a review of it, we're happy to come back at any time that you want to review the plan. At any time that the plan gets certified, and we're not in compliance with it, you all have the ability to direct Mr. Kane to send us a notice of violation that we have to correct. So, you all always have, if there's a violation, the ability for enforcement. If I'm misstating there, Mr. Perkins, you're always very quick to correct me when I am, he'll tell you.
No, you're fine so far.
Or we could just deny this as well.
Well, you could, except the evidence in the record, at this point, says that it complies with all of the governing land use regulations.
Oh, I'm sure we can find a reason not to. That's why this committee exists.
I understand, sir.
So, even if we had a timetable for you to come back, you said you can't commit to a timetable today, certainly it's something that if we lay a timetable out, you can say, hey, Joe, we need to move it out a month, or two months, or whatever. I think that's reasonable. I'm, I'm very concerned based off of what I hear. I know that you say it's not relevant, but to be relevant, the integrity of the, of the company that we're dealing with, and doing what they say, and being good neighbors, I'm concerned that without it sort of on the docket, on a schedule, that it will get away from us, and then we'll be back here in a year or two years having the same discussion, and they'll be out of compliance, and we'll be like, oh, well, we have to approve something else to get you back in compliance, and that's not okay. Mr. Watkins?
Can I make a recommendation?
Ask the chair.
I would like to see before any actions taken, before anything's.
Can you come to the microphone?
I'm sorry. Before anything's approved or disapproved, to have a traffic study, and let's evaluate it, and let, get everybody involved, District 7, the engineers, we're going to improve their road, or whatever. Let's see what they want to do with it, what is available, and before we make any declaration what can or can't be done, because that's a major problem, is that intersection. I agree with you, that is a major problem. I sit there and see it every day. One's trying to turn in, one's trying to turn out, and now they're backed up Sims Pike, and everybody's mad. I sat there and watched two weeks ago, a truck coming off, going, as you're looking at it, going toward the interstate. Truck driver trying to turn in, one trying to turn out, he wants to turn left, he wants to win, and you got this, now you got this. And the whole intersection's blocked, nobody can go, now they're backed up down Sims Pike, and what happens next? An ambulance. And there sits an ambulance, with the lights going, the sirens screaming, and it's blocked, and he can't go nowhere.
If I may, but what we're looking at, at voting on on this piece of property, though, it's just for trailer storage. That's not going to stop. Trucks coming and going now are still going to be coming and going.
It doesn't change anything.
And I don't know how much traffic's going to increase, or how many more trucks, don't have the truck storage, I can't imagine a lot, you know, again, a bunch of truck traffic. And then, the improvements I see that's going to be done to this, is really going to help an area that needs a lot more help than to give it, but it's the best we can do for now. The only thing I would want to add to that is, I do like the double row of trees up along that gravel.
Well, I appreciate it.
Just, just up the top of the hill, right across from here, I'm sure.
We're going to clear back about 200 feet from, well, the state, the county road department actually has already been out there and said, they agreed on a county right-of-way, which is, we'll see the distance there. They're going to clear that back about 200 feet, there's a big, large tree back there. They're already going to do that as part of their normal road maintenance, they said it probably should already have been done. They're going to put it in their queue, that's already, that's already a process. If I can answer your question, Ms. Singer, about the timeline, the planning commission has the jurisdiction at any time it wants to put on its docket, a, not a suicide in the moment, but to go ahead and set a review of any development plan for compliance as part of your regular jurisdiction. So, you, so you don't, I mean, so, if you say 90 days, six months, whatever it is, you already have the jurisdiction to, to, to ask the staff to report on the compliance with the plan, and typically, if there's an compliance issue, the applicant's going to be there too, right? So, I think you already have the power to ask them to review at any time you want to do.
I don't disagree with that, I just want it on record, I guess, is my point.
But, I, I want to suggest this with, with Mr. Watson's comment about the traffic study. Respectfully, I don't think he really wants what he's asking for, because the traffic study looks at the traffic counts, and how the traffic counts will be increased based upon the proposed development. And maybe this was your question, Mr. Green, the, that's really not going to add value, I don't think, to this conversation, because the proposed changes here aren't going to lead to an increased use. The change is going to result in increased safety based on the existing use. Instead, if you look at condition number two in your staff report, it says, and what I think is reasonable, that we have to provide a traffic analysis of the Sims Road and Dela Plain, Cherry-Wassam intersection by a licensed traffic engineer, which made recommendations. So, they're going to use our information to them, and if they're satisfied, we have to still go through and construct the improvements. If they're not satisfied, they get to come back to you all and say, it's not been approved, we need to have a hearing. So, it's not the exact thing you'd ask for, Mr. Watson, but I actually think it's better, because they're making sure that a traffic engineer has approved everything we're suggesting, and recommends that it's appropriate for what we're doing. And if that engineer recommends something different, then we either come back to you all if we disagree with that, because it's not been approved, or if it's in the same agreement, we do it. Maybe they promote, I don't know what happened, if they suggest something less, I can't really imagine that ever happening, but.
No one agrees with less. Well, except applicants, but we don't, we don't agree with that.
So, you all asked some very good questions tonight about concern. When we got involved in this, what we tried to do is think about, when we came here tonight, or whatever night the eventual hearing was, knowing there were going to be some tough questions, how could we build in the model, how could we build in the approvals, the things that allow you to hold an owner accountable, whether it's online, or we sell it 50 years to somebody else, it doesn't matter. The question is, knowing Mr. Watson's concerns, how do we develop mechanisms? So, this is the, I think, the best-case scenario, because now you have absolute clarity from this hearing with respect to lighting, with respect to the safety, with respect to, well, it's not shown here, but the property at the top. So, that's what we've tried to accommodate by working extensively with staff for months on this project.
I have a question for Charlie. How long have you been serving capacity?
Good Lord.
You should know the next part of my question. I would like to know, what is the biggest fine ever been levied against someone in this development process where there's not been the right thing? In the history of Scott.
Oh, I was going to say, what county?
In the history of Scott County. You've been here a long time.
Not a particularly large one, because it, at least as I recall it, it was adding up at $100 a day. We got up into, you know, 60 days or so, and at that point, the applicant got kind of panicky, and they did the work, and the court actually probated the fine. So, there was no fine imposed, because they, they ameliorated the problem, and it went away. We've, we've rarely had to go to that point.
Who determines how much that fine is? Is that the judge?
Well, the statute sets what the range of it is, but the judge sets it.
So, it's a range of what? I like to know that.
Well, it's a, I forget, there's a difference in where it's $100 a day, or it's up to $500 a day, and I can't recall that now, but it, it adds up quickly. It adds up very quickly.
Working and planning the zoning in Frankfurt, you have a very good question, and I will tell you this, I'll answer, it's very, very, very difficult to enforce it in a court alone. To get it in, a lot of time, and nobody wants to hear it, and he said, she said, and it's very, 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 very difficult to enforce.
I'll add one thing, it is difficult, because county attorneys don't know anything about it, they're the prosecutors. If I'm not sitting there, it'll, it'll tend to get continued a time or two, and occasionally judges don't like to impose the fines. But, judges have not had a problem holding it over people's heads to get the correction. So, while we haven't actually imposed them, we've gotten the corrections when we've taken people to court, but.
It's not a popular thing to go to court with, the judges don't like to hear it, I will say that.
And, and they don't, because they don't know anything about it.
And it's not something that's, that looks good on.
But it happens, and it works.
Yeah, so it's, it's very, 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 very rare.
And if I could add perspective to one of the compliance problems that I see in land use, not really in Scott County, because I don't really think you have a lot of those, but in other counties we work in, is ambiguity in the approvals on an applicant create the opportunity for applicants to contest and object, and that ambiguity usually results in a process by which, in court, the parties resolve their dispute because of the ambiguity and the uncertainty of it. Whereas, where there's absolute clarity what an applicant has to do, like interior lighting, or put a barrier up that they can't take their semis through the other entrance, when there's absolute clarity, you usually don't have violations and fines and enforcement actions, because it's so clear what they have to do, and an owner is not very wise if they fight what is so clear in their obligations.
Thank you, Mr. Billings. Mr. Watson, do you feel better with what's been discussed here about the, not at all?
No, we're talking about Sims Pike, that barrier that needs to be there.
They said they're going to put it there.
If they'll put it there, if they'll stay there, but the history is, it's not there now. They could have put it up last week, last month, last year.
That's true.
It's not there. They could have put it up anytime they wanted to. Why do they have to be brought in here in this venue tonight and make a promise to do it with what should have been done, what they were told to do before? I mean, if that goes back to what I'm saying.
Part of the preliminary that wasn't finalized, then that's why it wasn't there before. Now, it's, if that, that is a condition, or they can't finalize this either.
Yeah.
And we bring it back for review, and we'll see that it's done this time, won't we, Mr. Billings?
Well, I'd like to say, I'd like to see a, I'd like to see a study, and, I'm sorry, I didn't use the right thing, before anything is done, I'd like to see what the engineers propose need to be done there, because that may throw it all out right there. I would like to table and see what can, because that's the problem, that is the intersection. I see it every day. I'd like to see what the engineers from District 7, whomever you hire, as a collective, say, this is the improvements that needs to happen in order for anything to move forward here. That's all I'm asking. I think that's, if I were sitting in your position, that's what I would ask for and I would hold off any vote until I had those, had that information in my head.
Well, I, I think we could. Which comes first, a chicken or the egg type thing? I think we could. And I think get the traffic engineer to do his study and, and as soon as you can get hold of that traffic engineer and get him under contract to do that, notify Joe so that then we have a date where we can set for a review.
That's, that's fine.
And, and ask them, you know, is this going to take thirty days or sixty days to get that review done? And then call Joe and say, we, we've contacted this, uh, traffic engineer and he can get in there by the middle of December and get us a report back by the middle of January. And that way, the end of January, first of February, we can come back in here and review everything.
So are you saying to continue it to then or to approve it?
No, I'm saying we can go ahead and approve it. And, uh, then that, that's one of the conditions of approval. If they don't do that, then it doesn't get passed. It doesn't go forward.
And, and we're still, I mean, again, sometimes you represent an applicant, you know, to, to proceed forward in a case. Joe has said the properties in violation takes, we don't have a development plan. So we have every incentive in the world, even with this preliminary approval, to move it to completion because he still has the sword of enforcement if we don't do that. Right? So it's still, it's still there that we, we can't just sit in our hunches with respect to this. This is, the, the paragraph number two has more detail in it than normal. But this is no different than when you all see developments that are going to make a new curb cut to a state highway that they say you have to have District Seven approval of those plans. You don't require the approval of the plans. You don't require the District Seven engineer to come in here. You all say this has to be approved and you authorize staff to review that. And if staff and the applicant don't agree, it can always come back to you all.
I think the difference for me is the history of online transport not doing what they say and not being a good neighbor. So that's the difference to me in saying, no, let's come back here and talk about it before they move forward. To me, that's the difference. I understand what you're saying, but.
Well, but, but if we, if we deny it tonight.
No, I'm not saying deny it. We want to approve it, fine, but it must come back here and we must review, review it, not just that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We're saying the same thing.
This is still, this is, this is preliminary anyway.
Then the ability to move forward and start putting that barrier in place and start getting that, this traffic study. There's no incentive for them to do any of that.
Then the incentive would be if they ever have to get it, get it approved.
But none, none of this gets put in place or is enforceable unless this preliminary development plan is approved.
Yeah.
Otherwise, whatever's been going on for the last seven years will continue on for a week, a month, a year, six, six years. Because there are, there are no teeth. That's, that's, that's the reason for this. Specifically, you know, number two, which is to Mr. Billings' credit, um, far and beyond pretty much any condition of approval for any other entrance except for simple line of sight evaluation essentially, correct, Mr. Krebs? You know, essentially it's about everybody anybody else has to have. This is beyond, um, which is all fine and good. And, um, hate to say it, you know, but we are stuck in a very precarious situation with the state of Sims Road. Um, if nobody else there is, whether it be these people or whoever owns the property after or whoever, you know, however the adjoining properties, if this doesn't go through the way it's written, there are no teeth moving forward for improvement of that intersection whatsoever. And they can go on and do whatever they do. We can keep calling the sheriff. We can keep calling Joe, you know, we can keep taking pictures. Or we can attempt to grow some teeth and move forward with this.
I think we're kind of all saying the same thing, but that we want them to come back here.
Right, well, you know, and, and when they have to, I mean, this is preliminary.
And, and, and Miss Singer, you, you could put it on your agenda every month to have Mr. Kane give a report on this every stinking month. It's like you put on every other project out here if you want to. Like, accountability is not a bad thing. And I hear what you said. I, I may disagree with some of the facts. My goal tonight is not to dispute facts. My goal is to present a plan that moves this forward that helps that intersection get safer. And the longer this, this application gets denied, the longer that intersection stays.
I didn't say deny it. I'm talking about accountability. Uh, is there in a, in a situation like that, Joe, is there notification to those around that come back as well?
Um, if you ask them to come back, then we will require.
Require notification, okay. To me, that's reasonable.
And just like for tonight.
So that you don't have to track it all along the way, right?
Well, what's happening, I'm sorry.
No, just, just like for tonight. Our initial application, I think, was to be heard in August on this maybe. And so staff asked us to send another renotice out to all of the owners just because it had been a couple of months of, of postponements. So we did that. And so anytime it comes up, it's, whether it's a regular review in which you may not want notice because you just want to just see what's going on, or you say, hey, we want a full review and notify the owners. We're going to do whatever Joe tells us to do. Because he's going to tell you if we don't, and then I'm going to come here and then you're going to ask me a bunch of tough questions again. And I don't want to be in a position of telling you a bad answer to a kind of question.
All right. Any more questions for Mr. Billings or Mr. Watson or the staff? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. All right, we have heard testimony on online transport. If there is to be a motion, I will take it.
Should we close the hearing?
I'm talking.
Should we close the hearing?
I'll make a motion for approval of PDP twenty twenty-three thirty-eight with the caveat of the applicant, applicant returning with the traffic study, traffic analysis, whatever the terminology is in here.
Traffic engineer report.
Traffic engineer report, thank you, Mr. Perkins, um, for review by the commission. Does that say enough?
I'll second.
So we want a commission review of, of condition number two?
Yes, with notification as per standard.
Was that Dan? Did you second that?
Yes, I did.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Jesse?
No.
Uh, Mr. Best?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
So we have nothing. So we have nothing.
If you will go and see Mr. Perkins. All right, the next item is ZMA twenty twenty-three dash forty-nine, the village at Lemons Mill. It's a zone change request for property currently zoned R-two, B-two, located uh, south of East Main Street, extended north of Lemons Mill Road and east of McClellan Circle. And this is a public hearing.
Yes.
And so I am opening that public hearing right now.
Okay. Um, this is a zone change request, uh, from R-two to B-two to correct a situation where the, the zone district followed a previous, uh, road right of way. But the plan, overall plan changed, the road location changed. So it left a situation where there was, um, split zoning on a proposed lot. And I'll explain that in a second. So this property was rezoned R-two and B-two, uh, in, uh, two thousand nineteen. So the corner of Lemons Mill and the bypass was B-two highway commercial. The remainder was zoned R-two, uh, medium density residential. And this was an area that was previously split zoning, light industrial and residential. The light industrial was leftover. You could see it's all light industrial on the, um, opposite side of McClellan Circle. Well, it was light industrial on this side. When the bypass came through, it split and left us a kind of segment of light industrial. So back in two thousand nineteen when they rezoned, they, they downzoned, essentially downzoned this, this strip of land uh, from I-one and, and R-two, I believe, to R-two and B-two. So that corner, uh, was B-two. This was the plan that was approved after the rezoning. And you can see the road alignment was further to the west. Um, there's a little pond there at the corner, um, in Amerson Farms has a, their, their access to Lemons Mill is, is further, whatever direction that is, I think it's east of where, um, this previous intersection was. So there was an offset in the intersections. Um, this plan expired with the sunset clause. Uh, and they came back with, uh, a new plan. The new plan had a different road alignment. So that left then this hatched area as R-two uh, where you can kind of see where that hatched area is, was the old road alignment. Uh, so the request to rezone, uh, one point nine one acres approximately, um, is that to rezone that hatched area there. And the rezoning will, will bring it kind of consistent on those lots, on those three commercial lots will have consistent zoning throughout then. We'll have B-two zoning on all the lots. And then they can be developed because without that, they can't, they're not feasible lots. Anytime there's a rezoning, you have to meet the KRS requirements for a zoning map amendment. Either, uh, it complies with the conference of plan or there've been, or it's, it's zoned inappropriately. You can show that there was an inaccurate, inaccuracy. Or there's been changes in a physical, economic, social nature in the area that weren't, weren't considered when the conference of plan was written. Uh, in this case, the area, that corner was designated commercial on the future land use map. It didn't necessarily follow that boundary because there was no proposed, uh, project for the site. It was just vacant land. So, um, you know, it does conform generally with the conference of plan, future land use map. Uh, any, um, any development of those three lots will still require a development plan approval and a final subdivision plot approval. So we'll still have to see those, uh, development plans. We'll have to come back to the planning commission board. Um, so you will see, you're not approving commercial development on this property. You will have to see a development plan before that's approved. Um, and then this change will get rid of that non-conformity um, and bring it consistent with our, with our goals for zoning boundaries. We want them to follow property lines, follow road right of way, follow natural boundaries so that there's consistent development happening in the community. Uh, so we are recommending approval based on it being in compliance with the conference of plan. And then the two conditions, um, that they meet, development meets any, um, development of the site meets all the zoning and subdivision regulation requirements. Um, and then any development still will have to plat the property, uh, final plat to create the lots following this boundary. And then a development plan will have to be submitted for approval before they develop in this, in either side. We already have a preliminary subdivision plat approved previous, last month for the residential and commercial, but they still, they would still have to, uh, uh, get a final plat approved. So, um, that's all I had. We are recommending approval.
Okay, any questions? Joe. This is just, uh, one of those things where we're cleaning everything up.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, Governor, Representative?
Good evening. I'm Richard Smith. I represent, uh, Matt, Matt Welsh Real Estate Holdings. And I appreciate the staff's recommendation. It supports our application. And I'll entertain any questions.
You don't have any problems with the staff recommendation?
I do not.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Smith? All right. Would like to see him.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I'll take a, make a motion.
Did you ask the audience or did I just propose the question?
Oh, both. Anyone in the audience have any questions for staff or the owners? Uh, I have a motion by, uh, Mr. Jesse to approve.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Best?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And staff, which is. All right. We'll see Charlie Smith get the paperwork signed. And we will close the public hearing.
Very curious what all business is going to go in. Guaranteed at least one cell phone shot.
The next item, uh, was going to be was Huxmarket. And that's been postponed. Was that going in that commercial with the slot right there?
Just for the record, if you.
Haven't seen a Huxmarket, uh, right there in front of Costco. There's one right there, so. Uh, next item is PDP twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one, Triport Circle Truck Wash. Preliminary development plan for six thousand square foot semi truck, truck wash facility with overnight trailer parking located at one oh six, seven, Triport Circle.
Thanks Charlie. Um, before I kind of really hop into it, I would like to state that there have been some minor amendments made to the staff report. I'll address them as we get closer to that, but just kind of for everyone's understanding, there will be some differences in the presentation versus what is in the packet and everything like that. This is a, a B-two zone parcel in that, in the, uh, Delaplane Triport Industrial Park. It's kind of on that south side across from the existing pilot facility. And it is a one point seven acre parcel. They have requested a, um, a variance to tree canopy area requirements from twenty-four percent to twenty-three point seven percent. This is an aerial shot here. So you can see through the aerial, and this is, this is Google imagery. So it is a little bit more up to date than what we tend to see with some of the parcel line maps. But you can see that a lot of this, the Triport Industrial Park has been developed over time. And so this is one of the remaining lots that is available for future, for development, and that's what they're coming before us with. Um, something to note that I will address shortly is that, uh, Triport Circle is a privately owned road. So this is privately owned, managed, that type of deal. And Triport Road is a public street maintained by the county. So just a fun fact. This is the proposal here. So on this slide, I just kind of highlight the entrances. So, um, when you're kind of coming up approaching from the south, there's kind of the entrance to the pilot site and then a little bit further after kind of the, the major friend in the curve is where the, the entrance for vehicles who are being washed, staying overnight or employee vehicles. And then, um, north of that is where the exit from the wash facility itself is located. So they have kind of shown traffic and circulation markings as, as needed and, and everything like that. So it's important for those types of things. When we kind of talk about this, they have requested parking and this is an area where I have kind of amended our angle on this one. In the staff report, I reference a lot of, um, car self-wash and automated washes. These are truck facilities, so that was a misstep in our review of the parking metric. Uh, it kind of more, better fits the terminal facility for trucks metric. And so we've kind of adjusted accordingly there, um, which, that requires one space per one thousand square foot gross floor area or one space per employee. And they have six thousand square feet, I think, five employees. So we'd require six parking spaces, which they adequately supply in that area identified directly south of the building. They've also proposed, uh, trailer detailing and, um, kind of deep clean type area as well as overnight parking kind of in that middle area. And then incoming vehicles that are not stopping would kind of take the Y-way around, look up and then enter the, the wash facility in that kind of angle. To our understanding, this is sufficient space for the trucks to continue to move through while there are parked vehicles there. But if there's issues, we may see some minor changes to radii or anything like that. Um, this just kind of highlights areas of, of white water management. This is another area that I, I did have an amendment for. They have a detention basin kind of in between the two driveways as well as the one that's south of the, uh, southernmost entrance. And so they're kind of directing and grading, at least preliminarily showing grading to those areas. It talks about in the staff report that you guys have about draining to sanitary sewers. We've kind of corrected that. And, um, in that, to make sure that that kind of complies because this is exterior draining. I would like to note that that trench drain is kind of right up against the, the main building that they've proposed. And at the workshop meeting, we discussed just kind of getting it a little bit closer to the right of way so that it can better serve the grading that's kind of going away from the site as well as any residual water or runoff from the vehicles themselves. And that would, is anticipated to kind of more adequately address the drainage that's still coming from the vehicles exiting as well as any residual runoff at that point. And that, I believe that appears to be kind of connecting to its necessary systems. Um, the other thing and kind of continuing forward is just on land. The other thing, and kind of continuing forward, is just on landscaping. So I've highlighted here, I didn't highlight specifically the property lines, but you can see existing trees. These are off-site trees, and so they're, they're not really retaining very many trees on their site. It's not super densely populated, but with the necessary VUA space needed for trailer movement through the site, they've had to kind of remove a significant amount of trees. And they have shown, and I, I will highlight kind of the areas of landscaping that they are adding more specifically in a moment, but they are kind of removing a lot of trees in that area. And there is some existing natural screening. However, we do still require VUA perimeter landscaping, which is in that kind of light blue color, kind of around the, the property. So to the north, to the east, to the south. Because this is a commercial versus commercial zone, there's no property perimeter landscaping that we would see. If this was a different zone kind of activity, we would then see those types of, of additional buffering or areas where they would be picking the, the more stringent of two metrics. They also have in the interior space, a lot of aisle, interior landscape tree areas and areas like that. There are areas that are, or that do exceed 1,500 square feet, but our metrics and our rules say 1,500 is the maximum you can credit. You can have more, but you're only going to be able to credit 1,500 square feet. And so they do show an appropriate amount of interior landscaping trees. They also show important screening that we require for dumpsters and everything like that. When we kind of are looking at this and this gets into their variance, they've requested that accommodation for, for landscaping in order to not have to kind of exceed or meet that 24% tree coverage. They're preserving about 1,200 square feet of trees, so they need to satisfy that 24. And they propose 16,000 square feet of tree coverage resulting in a post-construction, post-development tree coverage of 17,455 square feet. They have requested that variance stating that it would result in overplanting, which this is a minor kind of shift in everything. Ultimately, kind of staff is not entirely in support of this. I've included in the staff report itself just some kind of tree math where if you were to trade out a small tree for a medium tree or a medium tree for a large tree, this could satisfy the requirements of the ordinance without necessitating a variance. And where possible, we'd like to see you just comply with the regulations as they stand versus try to get an accommodation that could easily be remedied by just trading something out, ordering one more large tree, one less small tree, or, or however you're going to trade it out. I kind of include the map there and, and everything like that. And ultimately, it's really exchanging one or two trees as opposed to just getting a variance for it. Continuing onwards out of the, the treescape, but I will leave this, this slide here. This is in the Bluegrass Water Utility area formerly operated as Delaplane Disposal. We have, they have submitted a letter from Delaplane Disposal or from Bluegrass Water Utility. Staff is just a little bit kind of cautious of it, given that it's, it's not really signed or anything like that. It's very ambiguous. There's no kind of acknowledgement of reviewing of plans or anything like that. And so there's just some concerns on that one. We have been able to make contact with Bluegrass Water. A different provider in that area was able to give us points of contact that we were able to contact and, and kind of discuss further. And there's just some kind of conflicting or kind of areas where we're uncertain of, of truly what is the extent of capacity and everything like that, which is why we've kind of recommended postponement to understand things. However, we are understanding that if this is ultimately approved, like they have that two-year window, they can kind of address those issues in that two-year window that they would be kind of operating within. And then if service isn't available, it isn't available, but they can kind of at least proceed if, if the commission feels so inclined. Last item is just talking about annexation. We do expect people just to do a consent to annex form or some type of written agreement on the plat. I believe that was something that Phoenix had done versus typically, again, we just do a consent to annex filing with the city should, if ever, Triport Industrial is, or this property itself is adjoining city limits, it's expected that they would be at least relatively okay with annexing into the city of Georgetown. So it's just a note that we have, and it is a condition that we have included as condition 10. This is still representing the staff recommendation of postponement until such time that we can make a solid understanding with the sewer provider in the area about the circumstances. We are understanding that if you ultimately move to approve, like this is something that could be rectified in that meantime, but it's just kind of an option available, and that's kind of where we stood on it at the time. We do recommend 10 conditions of approval. I would like to note an amendment to condition eight. It references Lexington Road. This is not a property that adjoins Lexington Road. So, and the conditions of approval that Charlie has, as well as an update for the record, that has been, that portion of condition eight has been eliminated. But besides that, everything else is, is our kind of standard conditions we see for development in Triport and in the county as a whole. Besides that, that's all I have.
So you've changed your recommendation from postponement to approval? Is that what I'm seeing?
In part, a lot of the postponement was just on concerns of the sewer capacity, but two years, or the two-year kind of sunset clause kind of window can kind of function as that kind of appropriate time to get in contact with that sewer provider, which was where we recommended it. So if you ultimately kind of.
But they can't do anything until they get that approval from anybody.
Um, yeah, they need to sign up on final development plans.
There is that.
It's kind of a natural kind of pause, but also if you felt so inclined to get confirmation or hearing from them before we even consider any more development in the area, that could be an option that you could take, so.
It's still a two-year term.
That's the two-year sunset, yeah.
How long have they been asking for something from them at this point?
Um, to my understanding, it's been since I've been here that they've been kind of on and off. For this specific operator, I'm not exactly sure, but I remember working with Worldwide a lot off of West Houston and having, them having consistently having some issues with, with the provider. So I can't, I can't speak to how long beyond how long I've been here, but.
Go ahead.
This is not completely relevant to this discussion, but maybe it's a separate discussion we have, but what is, who is the enforcement arm for a private sewer provider to be responsive? Because I will tell you, having dealt with that personally, it is incredibly frustrating for developers and for landowners to not even be able to get a call back from them.
Yeah. It is a, it's in the Kentucky Public Service Commission kind of realm. They're the ones when they were reviewing the rate increase conversations and in the kind of purchasing or collecting of, of Delaplane under a new name and under the current operators and everything like that, they're kind of the body that kind of manages all.
So somebody would have to go to the PSC to complain about?
Potentially, yeah. It would be probably the best route forward and then going from there.
We deal with Georgetown Water and Sewer. They tell us yes, no, we provide and all that. We are hearing from other people that they have problems and they may not be able to provide. So we warned the applicant that, hey, make contact, find out if this is viable before you go down this road and spend the money on engineering and all it takes. So that's, that's where, that, that's our warning.
I think the challenge is they won't even respond from my personal experience, like if they don't even want the business.
There have been a couple responses here in the last week or so.
Okay, well, that's good.
They're starting to respond.
Okay, good.
Where do I get?
Um, so Bluegrass Water is a subsidiary of Central State's Water Resources, which is operating out of Missouri, but they have regional offices. One of the individuals that we got contacts for, he does the kind of coordination for Kentucky and Mississippi services. And then there's others amongst that and so on and so forth, so.
Okay, it's a big company.
It is a large company, large conglomerate. They have a lot of facilities in, in Kentucky that they operate, I believe mostly on the south and east side. And not a ton in the Bluegrass area, mostly it's just kind of on the, the borders.
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you, Elise. Anybody have any questions? Elise? Do we have a representative of the owner here? All right.
All right. Well, good evening, planning commission members. I'm Daniel Rayner with Thoroughbred. I'm representing a Triport Car Wash here. And we are in agreement with her final recommendations for approval and the conditions of approval. The request for the waiver of the tree simply was because when talking with our landscape architect, we didn't want to put a random tree out on its own, so we don't have a problem with planting another tree and bringing that up to 24% or it goes over. So that won't be a problem. She mentioned the trench drain. We talked about that at the workshop meeting, and we clarified what that was initially. There's confusion on how that trench drain would drain, but that is only for store owner. The building itself has internal trench drains that would drain to sanitary. And as far as initially, so on, on the workshop meeting we had this week, we did not, we had not heard, we had not received response from Bluegrass Water, but that letter, I don't know, I have one copy, I can submit it, but they, they, they did respond to me with this letter that Bluegrass Water Utility, a utility managed by Central Kentucky hereby gives notice that the water system has the capacity to serve and will serve the premises located at 107 Triport Circle, Georgetown, Kentucky. So I was honest, it's a surprise here back to some of the folks, and I did much do this.
Here, did you get a signed letter from?
That was what they sent. So it wasn't, it wasn't.
No, it's not signed.
But that was.
There's been a couple of those distributed around, but none of them said a signature.
Yeah. That was, that was what was sent. So her request was that we initially, before, when it was postponement, was until we could receive at such time that the sewer provider, the project site provides sufficient information on their capacity and ability. And so as you all mentioned, we believe that's, that's sufficient to proceed. Obviously, they'll still have to sign off on the development plan. We won't build a building unless they sign off on it. But as far as all of their recommended, their conditions of approval, we're, we're in favor of those, and we'll abide by those.
Daniel, just for a practical standpoint, so if a, a truck is going to use this facility, they drop off that trailer and then they go through the, the truck wash, then they come, have to come back through and pick up the trailer and?
No, they would, so they would drive through this. It's kind of just like a, like a car wash.
Yeah.
But they'd come around here, they pull in there in south, and then all the washing, and then washing down inside, and then maybe pull it out.
Okay.
They don't dump off the train, so they just drive.
Well, what's the purpose of the dropping, the trailer drop area over there?
It's not, well, it's not, it's not a trailer drop. There's, there's, it's like a queue so they can have a couple people park there waiting to come in so they're not packed up this road, which already has enough trucks packed upon it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for, for Daniel? Audience have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, first from the staff and the owner. I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to accept it as presented by the commission.
I have a motion. All right. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Chair votes, yes. All right. So the last item on the agenda tonight is ZMA 2023-54, Mullins' property zoning map amendment, change of zoning from A1 and R1A to R1B located at 129 Mulberry Street, and that's in Stampin' Ground, not Georgetown. And so with that, it's, because it's a zone change, we've got a public hearing, and so open the public hearing.
Thanks, Charlie. So this is, as Charlie had stated, this is a zoning map amendment. This is kind of seeking to ultimately address some discrepancies in multiple zone parcels and kind of get it all under one name, all under one zone. I've used 129 Mulberry Street as kind of the point of reference. There are five parcels that are, no, there are seven parcels that are kind of being mashed together into a Frankenstein's monster sort that is, is going to then kind of function as a residential use. This parcel is kind of across the board, it's got three zones. The R1B, in, at which that portion, that's 0.317 acres to remain, an R1A portion that's about 2.8, and an agricultural portion that's about 0.2. Surrounded by similar zones and everything like that with access on Mulberry Street and then to either Locust Fort or Main Street, Stampin' Ground Road, et cetera. So this is an aerial shot of the property here for just kind of general reference. I pulled an entry for Google. So Stampin' Ground City Hall is located down here. David steps over here down in the corner, along the ground road. Louis Ford Road with that other zoning, or zoning app amendment application that we had seen last month and just kind of general downtown Stampin' Ground. And then I've highlighted the parcel itself here, so it's, it's pretty vacant right now. There's some existing light trees, but besides that, it is a vacant parcel. This is the zoning for the site. Unfortunately, the, the transportation didn't show up well for this one, but you can kind of see downtown having that commercial use and then railroad street having residential uses and Mulberry Street having residential uses as well. So you can see kind of there's the brighter yellow, the lighter yellow, and then the light green, and then bisected by, it is bisected by city limits. So I don't believe any of the parcels that are under review are one singular zone. Everything is just kind of a combination of, of two or three zones. And so ultimately, this is seeking to rectify the variation across the board to one zone and then move from there. I would like to note that, that as I said, that it is bisected by city limits. So ultimately, if this was to be approved, we've included a condition that they annex into the city of Stampin' Ground in its entirety, kind of essentially popping out, getting that portion that is mostly agricultural and bring it all into the city. When we look at zoning map amendments, we refer to KRS 100.213, which kind of outlines our expectations and what satisfaction, or what is an appropriate zone, a circumstance with appropriate rezoning, appropriate or that is not. We refer mostly to the future land use map, which is this guy here. So this kind of bright red color is a commercial zone. The light blue is a public quasi, or quasi-public use, so parks, schools, government facilities, those types of deals are typically light blue. And then the area of the project site as well as north is an urban residential color area. So it's just kind of higher density uses, apartments, townhomes, residential uses, single families, that type of deal. And so this ultimately does satisfy the expectation of the future land use map that this area would be an urban residential use, and the R1B is an urban residential zone. So it also kind of satisfies the expectations that when you are under five acres, you're in city limits, you're getting annexed in. I do mention it, I believe, in the staff report, just kind of going into detail about that one. But ultimately, this is kind of my up base summary here. We ultimately find that it is in compliance with KRS 100.213 Part 1 and not needing to or having to consider the sub-items A or B. And so staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment from our 1A and A1 to R1B for the property at 129 Mulberry Street, subject to two conditions of approval. They meet our rules, they annex into the city of Stampin' Ground in accordance with the Conference of Plan.
This is just a general question. At least kind of only vast, because of previous property. Does the actual city of Stampin' Ground will reach out to you on things like this, or is that not necessary, or?
They can. They can be aware of things with the public notice and everything like that, but in this instance, we do not hear directly from the city of Stampin' Ground.
They wouldn't have to approve the zone change, but they would have to approve the annexation of the sewer?
They would have to do both.
Okay.
They could do them at the same time. They could do them at the same time, kind of in the same ordinance, I believe.
Even though it's not in the city limits now, they would still have to.
Yeah, if they wanted to get into the city, they'd have to have an exception hearing. So, and that would be expected, I believe. Joe Hoffman, who's the city attorney for Stampin' Ground, has been contacted, but the applicant can speak more to that. Or the applicant's attorney.
This is another one of those where we just expect a recommendation and then they give.
Yeah, they're ultimately the ones that make the decision.
And again, we're just cleaning up all these odds and ends. In the city, out of the city, in different zones.
Yep, two jurisdictions, three zones.
Yeah.
Seven parcels, let's get it one, one and one.
Well, the city of Stampin' Ground has several places that the zoning is wrong. Not, you know, it's not just one, there's several.
Yes.
Just so you keep that in mind.
There are many, pretty much every parcel on Mulberry Street, you can kind of, you can't really see the property lines, but a lot of the properties that front on Mulberry Street go all the way to city limits or go past city limits. And they are split zone between the R1B and the R1A, where you have a house that's got a certain setback and then the accessory structure's got a different one. So it's not particularly uncommon. It has been something we've identified or that has been brought up, that there may be the potential for kind of fixing things, but that's not something that's been initiated yet. But it has been identified. Yeah, we're just fixing it now, which is, it's better late than never.
Any other questions for Elise?
I was gonna say, GIS didn't exist when those people re-zoned.
Yeah.
They just stepped them off.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Owners have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, the commission.
My name is Harold Sims. I'm privileged to represent Jeremy and Candace Mullins, the president here tonight, uh, on this zone change application. As, uh, Elise did a nice job of explaining that it's, this is a kind of an old school map, but.
It kind of breaks down the individual parcels that my client owns or has in their land contract. And, uh, and you can see on that map that it goes, we have an R1A zone and an R1B zone and an A1 zone.
Part of it's in the city, part of it's not. Uh, Mr. Mullins' plan is to, is to, he wants to have a home site out there for himself and his family and possibly a second place, uh, i- in the future to, for a place for his mother. And, uh, there was some concern with the staff at PRC and, uh, about the condition of Mulberry Street now. And even though Mr. Mullins' plan is for a very low density use in, in an already, uh, low density zone, he's willing to agree to a, a note on the plat, so future landowners, 20 years down the road, if they wanted, they said, oh, this is, we, we can get a whole, whole lot more, many more units on here than these two, because it's an R1B. Uh, he's willing to put a note on the plat that would limit the number of units on this, the, the site that you're considering tonight to just two units, his and the, and the possible site, uh, one, one other site. His plan is for it to be a spot for his mom. And, but, but until Mulberry Street is, is improved, there would, there would be a limitation on it. And notice to the people in the future would come by way of that, that, uh, language on the plat. When you looked at that, you were gonna look at this property and you'd see right away that there's a limitation and that some, some work is gonna have to be done on Mulberry before you can put the, and I, I maybe, maybe four units per acre on the R1B, uh, and, and we're, and I think we're proposing two units on what is like 3.26 acres. So, uh, the, the proposed density of that can, is well under what the R1B allows, but we're going to, uh, but we're going to oppose a self-restriction on there, that it, it won't be more than two until something happens to Mulberry Street. Uh, I have been in contact with, uh, Joe Hoffman. We've already, I've already sent him a preliminary consent to annexation. We haven't gone much further until we got the plat to know exactly where the line was before I go into the, the city of Stampin' Ground and ask to annex that property. I need, wanted to know more precisely from the, the engineer where we're talking about and how much land that is. And, uh, so I've already been working with Joe on that. This application, your recommendation, hopefully your recommendation will, would then go to the city of Stampin' Ground for what would be, uh, my plan would be that we would, uh, try to get the zoning approved and the annexation approved at the same time. We would only have to, I think we only need the consent of the landowners, whi- which are available and would certainly agree to it. So, uh, I think this, uh, eliminates, uh, one of the goals is to, that I heard Joe comment earlier tonight, is try to have zones follow some kind of, uh, definite lines, be it, whether it be boundary lines or natural, uh, landmarks. And I think this does a, a decent job of taking a hodgepodge of zones in different lots, making them into, uh, one or, one or two at some point in the future lots that would be all under one zone. Uh, they will all be in the city of Stampin' Ground. So, uh, if there's any additional questions, I'm, uh, here to entertain them and ask, I would hope that the commission finds this, uh, application favorably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Charlie, how does, how would they go about that to, to guarantee that that language gets put in the, the D book? I mean, would they just reference the D book and then we can go back?
Yeah, I, I think what, um, yeah, that, that's a condition we could not require.
Right.
Uh, so what they.
They would be self-imposed.
Yeah, what they will do is, that's part of their offer to the commission, and that will be included on their plat.
It would be a note that.
Yeah.
We, we would, the plat that, that staff has seen now will undergo some, so I'm guessing some more, uh, we'll, we'll put that note on there. I'm thinking from GMWSS, in order to get the, the consolidation plat signed off on and the annexation, we're gonna have to show an easement to get, show us, uh, sewer line availability to the back of the property.
And when that annexation is presented to Stampin' Ground, that will be on that plat.
Okay.
Uh, because they could not impose that either.
Right.
It'll have a zone classification and it has densities and whatnot on it, but that will be on the plat. And then that, of course, will be binding on not only these folks, but any subsequent purchasers. Uh, and of course, to get that changed, they gotta come back here. So even though we can't do it, it can get done, uh, through that plat.
Got you, all right, thank you.
Mr. Minister, just for, for the commissions, uh, I, I proposed the, I drafted the language, submitted it to Charlie and to the planning staff, and I, I didn't hear any problems with the, the actual language itself, but I'm certainly, if they want some other language in there, but I, I tried to convey what our intent was. So in the future, when somebody's running a title of this property and they look at that plat, they'll say, they'll, they'll see, you know, it's an R1B, we can't do more than two here until somebody does something to the road.
Right.
And, yeah, we've seen that language that was accepted.
Yeah, and we've also heard, well, we thought that language was in there and, but we don't have any record of it someplace there, you know?
That, that has happened?
We're gonna change opinions, they bypass.
Probably some language we didn't know was in there, happened too at times. But not recently, does it not?
All right, we have a, uh, you've heard from the staff and, and Mr. Sims. Any further discussion?
Ma'am, were you wanting to say?
Do I have anyone? Yeah. Okay. I will entertain a motion of some sort.
I'll make the motion. ZMA 2023-54 be approved for the staff report.
A nice second.
Miss? Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Chair, both of yous. All right. And that was the public hearing. That was a public hearing, so we will now close the, the public hearing. And, um, that's coordinate mental agenda, that has got everything covered that we were to cover tonight.
A second copy's yours.
Do you have anything else?
I didn't have anything major, but I just wanted to remind the board that we have to do, you all are required to maintain eight hours of training every two years. And I signed, uh, James Stone up for a KLC Planning and Zoning Training in Shelbyville on December 5th. So if anybody else wants to do it, it's eight hours.
What day is that?
December 5th is a. Seems like it's a.
I don't know what it is.
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, huh?
Where is that?
Shelbyville? I'm not sure.
It's on the, uh, it's got an address on it here you gave me.
I think it's probably at the city.
It's an old street. I think it's in here. I got it somewhere.
Okay, okay.
But, yeah, if anybody else is interested in going, we can all meet and a couple of sales go down together.
But no beer until you come back.
It's at the city, city conference center. City conference center. Also, I have a training, a Kentucky land use law training downloaded onto a laptop or an iPad. You all could.
Did that give me my eight hours? Did that give me my eight hours, or?
Um, I believe it was six and a half.
Yeah, it's six and a half, yeah, it's six and a half. I was thinking it was 30 minutes. Sign me up.
Sign you up?
Sign me up for Shelbyville, yeah.
Okay, I'll sign you up. We could do hour and a half there. Okay, if anybody else wants to go, just let me know.
You can leave at lunchtime, Dan. You can leave at lunchtime. There you go.
What time does it start?
Eight o'clock, nine.
It's like eight to five.
It said eight, but I'm sure it'd be registration for 30 minutes or better, won't it?
Um, well, you're pre-registered, so they'll probably have breakfast or something, like snacks and.
Do we pay a fee to do that?
Um, the office will pay for that.
What do we need to do to watch the iPad?
Just let me know, I have that in my car. I'll get it to you. If you want to do that one.
Give me the iPad.
Okay.
Here it is, Joe, what you gave me.
I'll make a motion to a charge.
It's got the time on it.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Okay, if I. Where's that, uh?
Um, 10 to 6:30, but, um.
Sign me up. Will the excess fall over in the next year? Okay, good. If there's two or three of you wanna go, would they just leave from your office up there? I've been a little bit at the city department, I hadn't made. Two or three of you wanna go together? I can pick you up here, if I gotta pick you up, or I can take you up, take your bags here and go.
You sign this?
There you go. She might wanna go.
Be careful.
Well, if that's.
You want these back, Joe?
No, we don't care. The more the better.
Not bad, you want these? Hey, Joe. That's from the, yeah, online transporter.
Oh, you'd be walking me. Yeah, I'd be walking, yeah. I knew, I had, I can't find nothing where you put three or four in here, I've got this. That's the way to do it. There'd be different fixings like that. Yeah. I always keep them in same packages and I keep them in their house for about a month and then I'll take them and put them out to shop. I always know which ones go where. I got a big old file cabinet at home. Yeah. Don't have a lot of that, but I take it out to shop, got a cotton kit and put them in. But I keep the date on the outside of them. I use the light right there so I can go back to which month I want. But a lot of times you need them to go back and see who, lawyer or something.